First, item of business invocation, Reverend Ronald Miller with St. James Church was going to be here to do that tonight. He had called and said he might not make it. He had had something come up, and I don't see the Reverend out there. So, we're going to ask Councilmember Williams if he will say our prayer, and then we're going to do the pledge of allegiance. If you would, please stand.
Captain Williams?
Lord Father, we thank you once again for having us all here today, Lord God. We ask that, Lord, you bless this city, and you bless these men on this council here today, Lord God, and you allow them to make the right choices and decisions, Lord. We ask that you cover this city, Lord God, anything that's going on in the city that's not right, that you remove it. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Madam Clerk, we'll have a roll call.
Mayor Allen.
Here.
Mayor President Hahn.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
Councilmember Broadway.
Here.
Councilmember Stevens.
Here.
Councilmember Balsier.
Present.
Councilmember Alon.
Here.
We're all here. Before we move any further down the agenda, I made a fatal mistake in our briefing, and none, most of you weren't in our briefing, but today is our clerk's birthday, and I knew, I meant to call her out and sing her happy birthday, and I forgot to do it. But can we sing her happy birthday in here? Is that okay? Will y'all help me with that? All right, let's sing happy birthday to Melissa. Are you turning red yet? All right, all right. I can't sing, so somebody start us off.
(Singing) Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Melissa. Happy birthday to you.
All right, well, now that I have done a good job of embarrassing you, we'll go on down the, we have the approval of the amendments for August 21, 2017.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any discussion? All favors raise your right hand. Opposed, same. You got it? Okay. Presentations, we have none. Public hearings, we have none. Public comment, we have two requests to speak. Is Mr. Sherman Johnson here? Mr. Johnson? Okay, he is not here. He had requested to speak about computer networks, and Mr. Carl Martin had requested to speak about boards and commissions, and I thought he was there earlier.
He's here.
Oh, there he is. What happened? Okay, come on, Mr. Carl.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
I'd like to give you some information.
Thank you, sir.
While he's doing that, I do want to say that we normally only allow our public comment period to be three minutes. Mr. Martin has asked for extra time, and we have granted him extra time. So, you will see him go over three minutes. Anybody else that feels slighted when they get up?
Yes, sir.
Looks like you've been hard at work.
I've been reading. And what you have, first are some notes that I have made over what I've been reading with some questions and concerns that have come up. And there are four exhibits. The first exhibit is a copy of the boards and commissions, as I understand it from my readings that currently exist. The second exhibit is a copy of the current ordinance for Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission, also Parks and Recreation Department, and the Municipal Golf Course Committee. The next is a copy of Resolution Number 2009-9, Resolution Updating a Comprehensive Set of Procedures and Policies for the Operation of Local Citizen Boards, Commissions, Committees, and Authorities. And the last item is a copy of the proposed ordinance change, which is Chapter 34. And I've highlighted items on them which I'd like to touch upon. First is Chapter 32 eliminates Chapter 97.30, which is the Recreation Advisory Commission Ordinance, and Chapter 97-32, which is the Municipal Golf Course Ordinance.
Let us get with you, Mr. Martin. Which exhibit are you on?
That would be...
97.30.
The second exhibit.
Okay, I've got number two. Bottom of the page. I'm with you there.
And at the bottom is Chapter 32.
Got you. Okay, I'm with you.
Okay. Now, as I said, Chapter 32 eliminates Chapter 97.30 and 97.32, which currently exists.
Okay.
In so doing, Recreation Advisory Commission's current authority to establish its own procedural rules and policies is being eliminated, and it is not included in the proposed Chapter 32.
Okay.
So, the question that I had is, why is that authority taken away? And why shouldn't all the boards, committees, and commissions have the right to establish their own procedural rules and policies, as long as they don't conflict with city ordinance rules and policies?
Okay, so, let me stop you one second. So, Melissa, if you'll do me a favor, has he asked questions? Because we obviously don't know the answer tonight. Will you be sure you get his question? So, that way we'll be able to come back.
Yeah, I don't expect any answers.
Well, that's a good thing.
This is just questions that have come up.
Yes, that's good. Okay.
Will Chapter 97.32, which is the ordinance for Parks and Recreation Director and, oh yeah, the Director Ordinance, remains unchanged by the proposed Chapter 32? That's my understanding, is that section is going to remain. The only changes were to the Recreation Advisory Commission and the golf course. Now, if that's not going to change, then the Parks and Recreation Department and the Parks and Recreation Director, to whom the Goldsboro Municipal Golf Course reports, has, has been, and will continue to be in violation of Goldsboro City Ordinance 97.32, specifically the Section D, powers vested in the department, which reads as follows: "Such powers are now provided by statutes of the state or by ordinance of the city relating to the development and operation of recreational systems, play areas, and athletic fields other than the municipal golf course are hereby vested to Parks and Recreation Department to be exercised by subjects to any and all restrictions therein." It also raises question as to whether some of the expenses for maintaining the golf course have been and are now being properly, improperly allocated, or allocated to the golf course budget and not to Parks and Recreation's budget. Chapter 32 eliminates all parts, all or any parts of Resolution 2009-9. Chapter 32 eliminates all of Resolution Number 2009-9. If Chapter 32 eliminates all of the resolutions in 2009-9, then Chapter 32 eliminates Sections 4, 5, 6, 7, and 9. In those chapters, they are, there are key policies and rules that were set up for the committees. And one of those was that we were looking to fill these committees with people of different races, so forth, but one important element was eliminated and not included in Chapter 32, and that is all social economic elements represented by the city's population. So, 32 has actually shrunk the diversity attributes that we had in the prior ordinance. Concerns: The elimination of the following existing boards and commissions. I don't see where the Housing Authority Boards and Commission is included going forward in Chapter 32, nor the Local Firefighters Relief Fund Board of Trustees, nor the Goldsboro Tourism Council. And there are also other boards and commissions that are not included. For example, Goldsboro Urban Area Technical Coordinating Committee, Goldsboro Urban Area Transportation Advisory Commission, GWTA Transportation Advisory Board, those, and also the Stormwater Stakeholders Committee are, as I understand it, boards and commissions that aren't included within Chapter 32, the proposed new ordinance. Boards and code updates. Chapter 32-302, parentheses C, removal, membership general. "The city may, in its discretion, at any time, remove any members of any board for any reason," is what is in the proposed ordinance, "including inefficiency, neglect of duty, or malfeasance in office." Now, in the first part, it says that the city council may, in its discretion, in its discretion, at any time, remove any boards, any members of any boards for any reason. That being the case, why do we need to include specific grounds? Because you've excluded them all when you said "any." Now, I have no problem with the specific reasons that are listed for removing members from the board, and for maybe some other reasons that aren't listed, but giving city council this authority to use at any time and for any reason is too broad, and it can be abused in situations where board members give advice to city council that members of city council don't want to hear about or don't want to be known. For example. Section 32-303, election of authors. Term of the chairman shall be one year with eligibility for reelection. I have no problem with that section at all. As a matter of fact, it was recommended to the Recreation Advisory Board, but the majority didn't approve it. What is not included is a limitation on the term of vice president. And since we have one for the presidency, should there also be a term for the vice Section 32-304, term of office, I have no problem with that section. 32-305, conflicts of interest, I have no problem with that section. That is going to be a change for Recreation Advisory Commission, but I don't think it will pose a problem. I think it's a good idea to have it in there. Section 32.306, attendance at board meetings. In that section, there's a section that says, "The staff liaison of each board shall maintain attendance records, including attendance at regular meetings, work sessions, and all special call meetings." Attendance was addressed, oh, it also says attendance in parentheses, attendance addressed and general rules of procedure policy. Where can the general rules of procedure policy be found? Is a question that I have. And I sought some advice and was told that it is a draft, which means the policy has not been finalized, and the city manager is suggesting that the council enact a new ordinance when an important part of that ordinance has not yet been completed. Also, who is the staff liaison for each of the boards and commissions? Is that a city council assigned person? Is the director of department that the board is providing oversight for? The term I did not see defined in Chapter 32, and for clarity, I think it should be defined. Section 32-307, meetings shall be subject to the open meeting laws. Recreation Advisory Commission members and other boards need to be brought up to speed on the new North Carolina open meeting laws. And how, how can we get brought up to speed on that? Is a question that I have, because I think that it's important that we do follow the laws and that we know what they are. And perhaps that is a training session that could be provided to the boards and commissions. Section 32-308, quorum. A quorum shall consist of a majority of the total voting membership plus one, excluding vacant seats. I'm very pleased with this clarification, because there has been disagreement in the Recreation Advisory Commission with Parks and Recreation as to what constitutes a quorum for the Recreation Advisory Commission. And as a result of this, as a result, this is one of the rules that was established by the Recreation Advisory Commission in August of this year and reported to city council at the last meeting. Rule Number 30, correction, ordinance Number 30, or Section 32.309, rules and records. All boards should adhere to general rules of order policy as amended from time to time in accordance with council practices and procedures. Each board shall keep members, keep minutes of its proceedings and discussion, showing the vote of each member upon every question, or a member's absence or failure to vote, and shall keep records of his resolutions, findings, recommendations, and other official actions. The question that I had about that is regarding the discussions that should be recorded when there is a meeting held when there is not a quorum present. I recently received advice that only thing recorded at a meeting where there is no quorum should be the names of the persons in attendance at that meeting. Do boards have to maintain records with the number of names of members who vote and how they voted? Was another question. So, those are some things that I'd like to have some clarity on in terms of the audit, the ordinance, the new ordinance, and also some direction and guidance.
Okay. We appreciate all your effort. We've got all this, and we will, as you heard tonight, we've got two more weeks, we're going to keep working on this. So, we will take what you did and try to answer your questions and incorporate that and certainly give you dialogue back.
And if you have any questions, other questions, you know where I am.
Thank you for your work, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Martin.
All right, so that was the only scheduled public comment. Now, would anybody from the audience like to speak for up to three minutes? Anybody from the audience? Okay, let me, let him come, sir, and you'll be next, okay? Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Charles Wright. I just wanted to echo my full support for Mr. Martin's presentation. I also want to follow up, but I don't have four minutes, so I have to make mine quick. First thing, I'd like to advocate for the removal of the thing that says, "Removal for position at any time for any reason." I think Mr. Martin already addressed that. I don't like that. That made my hair stand up. I haven't read any language like that since the history books in 1960. So, please remove that where it says, "City council may remove for positions at any time for any reason." So, please remove that. Second, I wanted to see a mechanism for accepting and processing applications for appointments to these boards. I couldn't find any language, and that was one of the main things I hear in the community, myself included. It was about a year or two years ago, I applied for three boards online, so maybe if one wasn't open, the second one I might get, or the third one. I heard nothing back. It's like a hold, and I find out that's going on with other people. So, I'd like to see some language. When you get an application, A happens, B happens, the city council know about it, mayor, you would know about if Charles Wright applied, and you can say, "Oh, he applied last year." "Oh, he applied in 2005." You would know that. The way it is now, none of you councilmen and mayor may not know. Second, which was already said, the role of the staff liaison. It was mentioned several times in this Article 32. Sometimes they are addressed as an advisor in some portions, sometime they is addressed as a secretary, sometimes they are a coordinator, sometimes they are a supplier of staff and technical services. I like to see consistency. You can't have a staff position and you want to make them whatever you want depending on what committee they sit on. And I like to delineate the words between advisory and may, may make recommendations. I think that's listed in your recreation, as the Recreation Advisory Committee, and in the first sentence, you said they may recommend. And all I would say to that, Mr. Mayor, is the difference between me advising you to do something and me recommending. So, I think that language need to be a little clearly delineated, and there was also some sentences that go up to 70 and 80 words in one sentence. That need to be breaking down. I thought I was long-winded in my writing, but you surpassed whoever wrote it. That needs to be breaking down, because somebody's reading it. By the time they get to the end of that one sentence, they say, "Okay, what did I read?"
What did I say? I got you.
So, pay attention to some of those things. I always like to say, if you have any questions, in this case, I would say if you need any help in writing this, I'm available. Thank you so much.
It's still a work in progress, Mr. Wright, but we'll take your comments. Okay, young man in the back right there, you got it. Come on, son. You look like you're here to talk about skateboards. I really did, he really doesn't look like that. I heard him coming in saying that's what he was coming for, y'all. I'm really not that smart.
Yeah.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. I don't really have anything prepared, but we just have a few questions if there's going to be like a potential expansion of the skate park, or if lights are going to be put out there, because we were told by the Parks and Recreation Director that there would be lights.
You go ahead and speak up. I can't hear you.
I just have a few, a few questions about the expansion of the skate park and if there is going to be lights out there.
The lights, I can answer. We've had several emails. We're waiting, we've approved the lights, we've asked Duke to put the lights in, and they were supposed to come this week, but that's the story that we know. It's not in our hands, you know, we can't make Duke come any faster than they come, but I do know they've been approved, and I do know they're supposed to be installed any day now. That would be the answer on the lights. Your other question was about an expansion of the skate park?
Yes, sir.
I don't think that that's on our radar for today, but maybe with your group, you tell us what you, what you would like to see out there next, because we're not skateboarders and we don't know. The reason the park's here today is kind of because y'all have a vision and helped us with it. So, tell us what you want to see next, and, you know, go through Parks and Rec, and we will see what we can do next. Because I will say, it does my heart good, I ride by there a lot, and I see people use it all the time, even way after dark, but I guess that's all right.
Yes, sir.
But just, what else?
I see.
All right, well, y'all stay safe out there, and we'll get your lights. Would anybody else like to speak? Anybody else? All right, we're going to close the public comment period, and we will move to the consent agenda.
Sorry, I didn't mean to do that.
Yep, Mayor and Council here. Consent agenda consisted of items B through Q. You had removed item D to an action item, so it's items B through Q with item D moved to an action item.
I make a motion that we approve items on the consent agenda, B through Q.
Is there a second?
Sir.
We eliminate, not D though.
Yes. Yes, we're going to, let me rephrase that. We're going to, for the consent agenda items, I make a motion that we approve items B through Q, eliminating item D.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All favors raise your right hand. Pledge the same?
Roll call.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Y'all got me off. Melissa?
Mayor Allen.
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor President Hahn.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Councilmember Broadway.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens.
Yes.
Councilmember Balsier.
Yes.
Okay, consent agenda is approved. Next, we have items requiring individual action. The first one is item R, historic property discussion.
Good evening.
Item regarding historic properties donation. The County of Wayne owned properties addressed as 200 East Walnut Street, 204 East Walnut Street, 206 East Walnut Street, 106 South John Street, that had been completely vacated in 2016. These historic buildings have not had adequate reinvestment in them for some time and thus are in need of significant repairs and reinvestment to achieve reuse of the buildings. After the city and county discussions regarding county's plans for the buildings, the county opted to donate the properties to the city to relinquish their ownership, as they had no interest in their utilization and reinvestment for county use. Properties were donated in November 2016. The city had the four properties appraised in November 2017, and as of November 22, received the final appraisal report that estimated the as-is market value and fee simple of the land and improvements to be a negative $50,000. Due to the condition of the properties, estimated demolition costs, as well as the restrictive covenants the city will place on the properties to protect the historic integrity of the properties at the time of the sale. The city is in receipt of a letter from the Downtown Goldsboro Development Corporation DGDC president requesting that the properties be donated to their organization to allow their involvement in saving these valuable properties. The DGDC has partnered with the city to save historic buildings downtown in the past. In 2008, the city and DGDC partnered to accept donation of properties within the 200 block of North John Street. Each of these properties has been rehabilitated or is currently under rehabilitation now through new ownership. North Carolina General Statute 168-266B allows local municipalities to donate historic properties for historic preservation purposes to nonprofit organizations whose goal is to preserve historic properties. This is one of the core values of the DGDC and the Goldsboro Main Street Program. Per the letter, the DGDC is requesting the donation of these four properties, stating, "We have found over the years that investors are more willing to work with a nonprofit organization whose mission is to save historic properties for economic development purposes than working through a government system." In addition, they state, "As a nonprofit organization, we can consider capacity, timeliness, uses, and other factors in an offer, and we believe this to be in the best interest of downtown and the city." We are asking the city to donate these properties to the DGDC so that we may work with the city to secure their restoration and reuse. In return, the DGDC has asked for the following, or stated such, "That the city maintains the insurance of the buildings for a period of six months from the time of the donations, or agrees to reimburse the DGDC for their cost to insure the properties, whichever is agreeable to the city. That if the DGDC is not able to dispose of the properties to a private investor within six months of the donation, that they are willing to follow the Department of Interior Standards for Historic Rehabilitation, provide historic preservation easements to the city, invest substantially to utilize the first and second floors of the building, and result in a mixed-use development project consisting of both commercial and residential spaces. Then the city will agree to reassess the needs of the building, particularly the roof at 200 East Walnut Street, incur the cost to replace the roof or other major needs to save the buildings, and that these expenses will not befall the DGDC. That the city will donate the properties with historic preservation covenants attached to the deed for the properties, and the DGDC will assure that future owners will be expected to provide historic easements of the properties to the city prior to rehabilitation to secure their protection and purpose for downtown and the public good. If in case the DGDC is not successful at selling the properties for restoration and reuse with these restrictive covenants and guidelines within six months of the date of the deed, the properties will be transferred back to the city for ownership to make the roof investments, and then attempt to sell the properties for the invested cost, unless at that time the city and DGDC come to an alternative approach that they can mutually agree upon. It is therefore staff's recommendation by motion to accept the downtown development staff's recommendation to permit the city attorney to proceed as requested to result in a donation of these properties to the Downtown Goldsboro Development Corporation with the purpose to secure an investor for the properties, restoration, and reuse consistent to the aforementioned terms. I will also add, since the time that we prepared this agenda item, the federal historic preservation tax credits still look to be, that they're going to continue them at the 20% level. The caveat will be that the investor will not be able to secure all the credits at 100% at the time of the sale of the credits, and will have to extend them out over five years, which decreases the value of the credits to an investor and a syndicator at about 15%. So, another reason that this is a good step forward to save these properties and donate them to the DGDC is the DGDC will create a LLC, sole proprietorship. These properties will be its only value, and if an investor comes along, they can purchase the LLC and the properties that we own, and therefore will be grandfathered into the existing historic preservation tax credit code, which will allow them to use the credits 100% at the time of the investment. So, it'll keep the value as it is now, so they'll So it'll keep the value as it is now, so they'll be grandfathered in for the next three years.
Any questions, Julie?
You said it so fast, I was trying to figure out, you said what properties again? I think you said two hundred East Walnut Street.
Two hundred East Walnut, two hundred, two hundred and six East Walnut, one hundred, one oh six South John Street.
And two oh four East Walnut.
And two oh four.
It's the same ones.
All right, no questions. Do we have a recommendation?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, likewise? I think five-two. Okay, the motion carries and we'll move to item D, which we move to items for individual action, which I don't really, I guess you need to discuss it again because you already have. So there was a motion, I mean, there was a recommendation by council, I mean, by staff, I'm sorry, to adopt a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a contract with Delly Fence Company of the Grange in the amount of thirty-one thousand seventy-five dollars for the Union Fence Station Fence Installation Project, which would complete the scope and closeout of the City of Goldsboro NCDOT FHWA Enhancement Grant. What's your pleasure here?
I make a motion that we approve.
There's a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, same? Motion fails, I think. I thought it was five-two. I didn't.
Yes, it's five-two.
Okay, five-two. All right. That's that. Next, we'll go to the city manager's report.
Mayor and Councilor, I'll be brief. I just want to again thank Chief Whaley, who retired thirty-five years of service, says at the end of November. And then also to express my appreciation and thanks to Jimmy Rowe, our planning director, who's going to retire with thirty-eight years at the end of December. Chief Whaley had a number of public events. Folks were able to go and visit one of those. Mr. Rowe was trying to go out a little quieter than that, so I would just encourage those that know Jimmy to stop by and say hello and wish him well. He's asked that we not do a big event for him and we're trying to honor that request, although tough as it is with a thirty-eight-year employee. But I am appreciative of Jimmy's time and effort and just want to wish him both well in their retirement. And that's all I have.
Mr. Attorney?
No recall, Mr. Mayor.
All right, Mr. Williams?
I just want all of our citizens to reach out to our city manager, our, our, our city councilman, and also our community affairs lady because we need, we need summer jobs for these kids and sixty jobs is not adequate. We had over three hundred kids, they came out last year. If we want to stop this balance, we need to take these kids, create some jobs, let them be around mentors, give them a way out. If we leave them in the streets, they're going to be part of the streets. You know, I'm going to continue to talk about it. We have to, you have to, you have to put pressure on us. I want the kids working. I'm tired of, you know, trying to figure something out, tired of all these funerals. You should be tired of all these funerals as well. Let's, let's do something for these kids. They're part of our community, they're our future.
That it? Thanks, sir.
Ms. Roy?
I'd just like to thank Chamber of Commerce for our last Christmas parade. I could not believe how many people were there. And I also, they planned it, they executed, but also everybody that showed up. It was amazing, the number of people that were at a cold rainy day. We had that many in a hundred and ninety units, so I'm pretty proud of Goldsboro. That's all I have.
All right, Ms. Stevens?
I'm going to be a little bit long-winded, sorry. I'm going to speak on two major things. One, to a good friend of mine, and he passed away recently, Mr. Jack Thomas. He will be very dearly missed. And to his family, we are there for you. If there's anything I can do, please, you know, give us a call. But also reaching out to and echoing what Councilman Williams is saying and to all older generation and the younger generation. My father, my mother used to play, my grandfather used to play, Sam Cooke. A change is going to come. Very, very specifically, those lines, that song and all those sayings in it hold dear to this city. The city's been around as long as I can remember and longer than I ever existed. And we keep moving it and trying to move it forward, but unfortunately, there's certain things that happen that, you know, prevent it from becoming as great as it could be. At one time, it was the third most popular city in the whole nation. And then we come, we fall down below what the bell curve is. Then, you know, there are some people in the city feel that, you know, they're not allowed in the downtown area or they're not supported in that area and those types of things, and that's very untrue. If you just, you know, come and talk and just be open to what is out there, you will be most definitely welcome. Because I don't, I don't know, and I haven't really truly seen where it hasn't been, you haven't been welcome, but there are, I'm not saying that those things haven't happened and those types of things that are not happening because I'd be naive to say that would not be true, but I believe and I truly hold in my heart that if we move that forward and work together, that you will be accepted in any part of this city. And finally, for each and every one of us, I truly believe that we have come to a point where, you know, there's enough, enough is enough with the young people dying. And I mean, when I say young, I'm not talking sixty-five or fifty. I'm talking about below the age of forty and below. And we need to come to a point where we say, okay, enough is enough. Let's work with MPI, let's work with Mr. Harvey and the Mary Wooten Group, and then let's work with other different organizations to try to make transitional housing for those who are on drugs and those who are in there selling their bodies and get them help to move forward. Let's find a way to get our young ones that are going to prison and our men and women that are coming out and moving forward from being current offenders and reoccurring offenders to getting out and moving forward in that direction. Because I sat in NC Works today for over an hour, just sitting in the lobby, and it's not so necessarily they couldn't find a job or they didn't have the skills to do the job. It's just they didn't have the soft skills to be able to get these jobs. And we need to find a way to get them these soft skills. And it's not all on us. It's all of us together, working together to move that forward. So let's try to come together in this time, this given season and do that. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens. Ms. Ham?
Yes, I'd like to amplify the comments that Councilman Broadway said about the parade Saturday evening. I've noted that we each year seem to have a bigger, better parade. We have more attendance. And this parade Saturday was a example of people's, people turning out for it even under the adverse conditions. I've never seen in recent years that many people coming out for a parade. The floats and participation by the people within the parade was greater than normal. But we also had a great amount of volunteers who contributed to making that parade successful. Along with them were our police department. We had a great number of police individuals out there handling traffic, both personnel and vehicle traffic. So I commend all of those who came out to see the parade, those who participated in the parade as parade events, and of course, the volunteers. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ham. Mr. Foster?
Yes, I just want to make a motion that for now, now, our, our mayor only votes when he's breaking a tie.
I second that motion.
All those in favor, raise your right hand.
I'd like to discuss it first. The reason being is because under current management that we have, we have a city manager, council, mayor, staff. Most of those, most cities are set up that way. The mayor doesn't vote. He only votes when it's a tiebreaker. I feel like right now, he, his influence is too much over the board and me and him have talked about this and he's even said that he wished he didn't have to vote. So I think at this time, I think he'll agree with it because that's what he told me. So we can.
No, that's not what I told you. What I told you was it would be easier on me if I didn't have to vote.
And you also said you wished you didn't have to vote.
Anyway.
Any more discussion?
Same thing.
Any more discussion?
I second that motion. I believe it's the right thing to do when it's a tiebreaker. We then, we definitely need your input on that.
All those in favor, raise your right hand.
I have a question.
Are you still talking?
Yes. Under our current organization, is there any restrictions that the mayor can't vote on, under?
We have to research it too. I think all of ours says the mayor does vote. I have to research.
Our order says the mayor does.
But those ordinances are old, you know, they're not current to most policies in most cities, so I think it's time for a change.
Shouldn't we change the ordinance?
We got to change the ordinance first.
Well, you have to vote for it first.
Exactly. We have to vote for it first.
Mr., can I ask one quick question? Mr., Mr. Lawyer, or Mr. Attorney, sorry. What rules and adequate things would have to go in place to make this possible except from being just go ahead and voting? What would have to go? Because I don't, I don't, I don't see how this is relevant to what we're doing right now.
We'd have to check and see what authority is set up, whether it's in the charter, if it's in the city's charter, then it's going to have to take an act, special act in legislation to change that.
I mean, it's not, I mean, we can.
Also, check the general statute and see what they say.
All right. Thank you.
Any more, any more?
I'm not in principle opposed to it, but I'd like to, I'm going to vote against it because I want the city attorney to research those.
Well, then, I'll make a motion to put it off for two weeks and we'll vote on it in our next work session.
Second that.
Did you amend yours?
Yes, I did.
All those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed? What did it do? I didn't see.
Four-three, we won.
Okay. So we're going to put it off for two weeks?
Yes.
Okay.
That's it.
All right. Mr. Jacob, did you comment? No, your comments next, I'm sorry.
No comment.
How about that? All right, then it's my turn. So I do want to take a minute to talk about the parade, following up what my fellow council member said. It was a great parade. The chamber put a lot of effort into the parade, the police department, the fire department, the base had volunteers. Unless you're out there early, it's amazing what goes into a parade. But most of all, we had some really good participants and we had some really good citizen participations. That always makes it good. So I was real pleased with what's going on the parade. On December twelfth, at the Goldsboro Event Center at four p.m., we're having our State of the City and State of the County. And basically, I think the manager, the city man, the city manager, county manager, myself and the county commissioner chairman are just going to get up and give a briefing over the last year, where we feel like we've been and where we feel like we're going. But I would encourage any citizen that wants to come, to come. Hopefully, all our council members will be there and it'll be a good time for you to engage with, with council members. So we want to encourage everyone to come. Again, that's December twelfth, four o'clock, at the Goldsboro Event Center. And then third is it is Christmas season. I want to encourage everybody to shop local as much as you can. It does matter that our business is here, that we shop local. I know the tendency is to go out of town, but if anything we can buy in town is good and I appreciate that. And then fourth, I just want to encourage all of you there again in the Christmas season to do what you can and reach out to help others because as we all know, there's a